Ladies and gentlemen, at six o'clock, we begin to call the meeting to order, Mount Pleasant City Commission. At this time, I would like to...
Robert, Robert's here?
Would you like to make a statement, please?
I'm happy to.
At this time, I would ask that all the members of the committee, the board of commissioners, the board of directors, please.
If you would bow with me, please. Dear gracious God, become to you today, Lord, we're so thankful for your blessing. Thank you for your protection, watching over each and every one of us who traveled here to this meeting tonight. We ask, Father, that you govern this meeting, take control of this meeting and everything that comes forth, other than be in your will. We ask all these things, the pressures, all of that.
Ladies and gentlemen, the United States of America, and here is the Lord for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, the court, please call the roll.
Mr. Bailey, welcome. Mr. Bailey?
Here.
Lady Chip, here. Miss White?
Here.
All present.
Okay, all present. First of all, item four will be the approval, corrections of the minutes for the fire meeting as received, pending April 17, 2018. The officers have a copy of that, any discussion about it?
No, sir, I would like to make a motion to be approved.
Motion's been made to approve the minutes, seconded. Do you second it? All in favor, six and five, a saying aye. If those like to sign, those minutes are approved. Item five, awards, presentations, and appointments. This time, it's my privilege tonight that we honor one of our subjects, a good friend of mine for 50 years, and he's still preserving of this honor. And I'd ask Alfred, if he would come forward and bring Nancy with you, something to read and present to you.
Alfred doesn't need blasters, but I do. I've just gone half the opposite mayor's proclamation, being hereby known that, whereas the citizens of the city of Mount Pleasant are proud of those individuals who bring personal pride, have a dedicatedness, believe in family and spiritual values, and bring recognition to our citizens. And whereas Alfred Brown Edwards, I didn't know his name was Brown, I learned something about him. Possesses these characteristics, has been a part of this community, and has been dedicated and loyal to his customers in the Mount Pleasant community since 1950, when he began his career at Weston Alto. His mentor was his uncle Burgess Ross. With Mr. Ross's supervision, Alfred sold merchandise, repaired appliances, and some of the first TVs in this area. Whereas in January 1961, Alfred accepted the invitation for employment with Rippey Auto Parts located on South Main Street in Mount Pleasant. For 57 years, he remained unemployed with the Rippey Auto Parts until his retirement in March of 2018. He was a loyal and dedicated employee, working from 7:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. Monday through Friday, and from 7:00 a.m. to noon on Saturday. Alfred's wife Nancy says she never heard him say, "I don't want to go to work this morning." In an emergency after-hours situation, he'd always tell people, "I'll be there in just a little while." Whereas Alfred was born with the natural talent and ability to engineer solution for almost any automotive-related mechanical electrical problem. His distinction trait of character was his willingness to make his time and knowledge available to anyone in need. His priority was never monetary gain. Whereas Alfred's wife has three children, Ray Edwards, who lives in Lebanon, Alfred Bubba Edwards Jr., and Vicki Edwards Roberts, who both live in Mount Pleasant. They have six grandchildren. Over the years, Alfred has enjoyed restoring classic cars, especially A Model Ford and 40 Model Ford. He's enjoyed riding motorcycles, remember that, and attending stock car races. He likes eating oysters and chilis. Man, I'm glad you're not needing no, no. Whereas the city of Mount Pleasant's mayor and board of commissioners wish to join with family, friends, and neighbors in honoring this outstanding individual at this time. Now therefore, James L. Buddy Jr., mayor of the city of Mount Pleasant, to hereby recognize and proclaim May 15, 2018, as Alfred Edwards' Day, and call upon all the citizens of the city of Mount Pleasant to join in recognizing our citizens and his family.
I need to make a copy after you do, Mayor.
Yeah, I thought you were going to say something. Yeah.
I'd like to say just a few words, and I'm not very able to speak. Cotton would do a whole lot better, and I know that Mr. Bailey and more is a good speaker. But I may be named Jimmy Edwards, I'm not sure if you're waiting for Tommy over there and so. Anyway, Alfred, thank you so much for your loyal service, your wonderful service to our family, our company, our city, our county, and love you, man.
Appreciate it.
I will say that I have truly enjoyed knowing Alfred and Nancy, and I know that he did make many trips to his store. My uncle, F.J. Hayley, what's his name now, but he ran an auto parts store in Columbus, JB Cook for many years. And I can remember making many trips to my uncle years ago back to the store at night. And I know you did the same thing down here. That day in Air Service, it's gone forever, folks. I miss it. It's something, and when people thawing up each other, coming down, opening stores up and helping the people that were always there. I doubt if you could put a gun in someone's back, get them back to the store at night. But thank you for what you've contributed to the city of Mount Pleasant, and we just appreciate you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, is anyone here that had a Teacher of the Year award? The Teachers of the Year, there are two distinct groups. One belongs to the Murray County Education Association, and they pick their nominees. And then the other, all the public schools, they all pick a nominee outside the MCA. I'm just going to read his name. We're proud of all these folks, told them they didn't have to go, they were welcome if they wanted to. But the Mount Pleasant Elementary School Teacher of the Year 2018 was Tony Van. At the elementary school, was also the MCA Teacher of the Year, Mike Lowen. Mike's retiring this year. I think he's been there about 29 years. He was a very talented person, he does great woodwork, and I know they'll miss him over there. The Mount Pleasant Middle School Teacher of the Year 2018, Michelle Farlow Floyd. And the MCA Teacher of the Year there was Donna Kennedy Lewis. Mount Pleasant High School Teacher of the Year 2018 was Natasha McFall. She moved up here to Larchburg a couple of years ago. There's a really nice story about her in the paper this week and so forth. And the MCA Teacher of the Year at the high school was Scott Anders. And he's the one, I believe, he does the carpet.
Yes, he does. Building that tiny house.
I'm not going, since they're not here, I'm not going to. But say thank you to these teachers. It is an honor to have these teachers, and to, that they're dedicated, and appreciate all of them very much. And our community grows with the strength of our children. I'm sure we have to have good teachers in order for that to happen. Okay. Certificate of compliance?
Yes, mayor members of the commission, this is for Jeff Teaching to be able to continue to sell wine in the grocery store. Has to come back every two years to get a certificate of compliance, showing that there's no issues with either the zoning of the location, or his personal record. And it's not, and I have that in front of you, mayor, for your signature, but we need it to be a formal vote.
Okay. Any discussions about this? You want to scare him and tell him that bad?
Don't. He'll be by me, he'll be on my doorstep when I get out.
And drive around in a convertible like he's got, he knows. Okay, the chairman of the town motions, intent for this certificate of compliance. So move, move for approval, second?
I'll second it.
Second, any further discussion? All in favor, six and five, a saying aye. If those like to sign, that certificate has passed, I'll sign it.
Thank you.
Item number six, completion review of unfinished business from fire meetings.
I don't believe that there's anything outstanding, Mayor.
Monthly report from the mayor. Something else I want to say, slipped my mind now.
Tomorrow's lunch?
What?
That tomorrow's lunch, that lunch with Jim Tracy tomorrow?
Well, tomorrow, the Rotary Club is honoring Mr. Jim Tracy. He's the state head of the USDA Rural Development. They're the agency that secured this loan and grant from Mount Pleasant, and want to have him down here, and then meets people. He's new to his job, he's not new to government, he was state senator for several years, he's chairman of the Transportation Committee on State House, so he knows a lot about government, and he's got a new job for the state. Item number eight, monthly financial budget report, please.
Good evening. April was one of our busiest months, as we're preparing for the budget meetings and budget amendments that all seem to come about at the same time. The, we've also been dealing with the tax rate and reappraisal. One thing we do want to point out is, in your, the budget amendment, we did include, as part of the package with USDA, part of that is paid on, not, it will eventually pay off, but to take that $1.8 million settlement, and to make that payment, go ahead and make that payment. So we did include that in tonight's budget amendment, before June 30th, to make that payment. And April's, of course, the 10th month of fiscal year, was pretty much on target, as far as our budget concerned, with the exception of gas, it's already over budget. And of course, the budget amendment should rectify that. And of course, that was the, was also, it was a couple of months that we had the cold weather, it just absolutely was that purchasing your budget out of the water. Other than that, our cash and our checking, they say they have, including CDs for the general fund, is just $1.991 million. For the gas fund, it was $2.6 million. And the water had an operating account of $857,000, which again, is lower than what we would want to be.
What were we wanting to do?
Thirty-six months of...
So how much is that showing?
I'd like to try to keep it about $1.2 million, if it would be the idea.
Over a million.
That's our target.
That's our target.
Yeah.
Right. And of course, that comes from all of the leaks we found, all of those unexpected expenditures that come about.
What is it improving, are you still in the status quo?
As far as the budget concerns, it's still status quo.
Yeah.
They still finding leaks every day, unfortunately. And maybe fortunately, though, because you give them big...
And a lot of them are on paper, you're finding them on paper too.
Yeah, and I find a lot of things that had, had been going on for quite some time, and I want to have a clue. And of course, when you put the new, the new plan online, it just, it casts a shot of light to these other issues, so it's not necessarily a bad thing, it's just a very painful thing to get rid.
And Loretta and I have a meeting with the Jim Marshall from Thornton, who's doing the rate study, June 9th, so you should have some information about that next meeting. Rates on penetration and gas.
It could've been worse, too, if we didn't find one, we could've been more than four.
That's true, too. You kind of get excited when you find one.
Yeah. So that concludes our report. Anybody have any other questions?
Anybody have questions on our report?
So, I'm about to kill Loretta, I'm the first to meet. So with us paying that $1.8 million, and these are raw numbers, okay, we're going to wind up with about a $500,000 surplus when everything's set down in 18.
A lot of it is timing, and how, you know, we don't know how long the rural development financing package is going to take for it to happen.
Yeah, but if you take that $1.8 million, you pay it off. We were talking about doing a paying it on.
Paying on, yeah.
And you put that over in your disbursement side. Because it is there, the $4.868,533, and as you back that out, and then you just leave your revenues as they are.
And like I said, it's, they should be planning to continue to make payments.
Right, yeah. It looks like it'll be about $500,000, which is good, I mean, it's a good year.
It's a good thing, but that also, we'll obviously have to go into more.
Interest rates.
Interest rates.
Oh, I'm looking at it as a very positive thing, I'm not...
And a lot of that, yeah, a lot of that has to do with your department head trying to be frugal and trying to keep it down to a minimum. Although I did give Tommy a big bit of a hard time about being a big spender.
But I mean, it's great, I mean, I think that Tommy can see his work.
Right, and we don't see the guys who run the street very often, so we know he's doing the job.
I mean, I just think it's, I think it's fantastic. I mean, I just try to make sure we're all on the same page with that, I mean, that's going to save a significant amount of money, and we don't know exactly yet where that debt service schedule is going to save, once we get everything signed up. So right now, we're showing $400,000.
It'll make us much more comfortable cash.
Yeah, absolutely. We're showing $400,000, odd number right now, for next year, discount that in.
And if you looked at your debt service schedule, that I sent all of you, I incorporated that payment, so it will actually, during that in from time, even though we're going to take the money subsidy aside, we're not paying interest on that, so that will, in effect, lower that amount.
No, I think it's fantastic, I love the job y'all do every month, month in, month out.
And the interest we are going to lose, it's not, we're close to offset that.
No, 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 no.
So it's going to be a positive, to go ahead and get that paid. And everybody knows where it came from, it's been sitting in on account separate from everything else, so that will just be transferred to your general fund, or to your general water fund, and then the payment made from there.
And we still have, from the contractor, about 300 plus...
361, I think.
Okay, and we're just going to let that sit there. Any emergencies or anything like that, we're just going to keep that cash value there. We can, we can pay, make more payments later, as we get into this funding for rural development, but I didn't want to go to zero.
No.
So, and we still have that account there, cut aside, it's not going to be touched, it's not going to be impacted by anything, it's just sitting there. Very little interest, but...
But, but there for contingency. Not long, you'll see.
Chairman, so move, move for approval, second? Do you second, if all in favor, six and five, a saying aye. If those like to sign, that one, that one's a pass. All right, item nine, city manager's report?
Mayor and commissioners, you have several of the department heads in your packet, and I put that together to make the State of the City report that will be available the first of, gosh, June. All right. So that'll be all together by the first June, available here in the office and on the internet, on our webpage.
Any questions, city manager?
Mayor and commissioners, you have several of the department heads in your packet, and I put that together to make the State of the City report that will be available the first of, gosh, June. All right. So that'll be all together by the first June, available here in the office and on the internet, on our webpage.
Any questions, city manager? Okay, we look forward. Item two, any special reports from other city departments, please?
We don't really have a report, I just wanted to give you an update on wastewater. I anticipated the engineer's contract for the whole rural development financing being in front of you. They weren't quite ready. They've emailed Cory and I a 73 page, something like that, contract, that will be in front of you shortly, because that is the next step to get anything going. We can't spend any money if we don't have the engineers working on drawing, so that's the next step. We hope to have it in front of you tonight, but they were not quite ready for it.
Any questions?
No, thank you.
Item number 11, it's new business. Number eight, ordinance 2018-1020 on first reading, and ordinance, amend ordinance 2017-1005, said ordinance appropriates revenues and expenses of operating and maintaining the departmental functions of the city of Mount Pleasant from fiscal year beginning July 1, June 17, and June 32, 8.
Mayor and commissioners, this is a bit confusing, because we're talking about the current budget, and then later, we'll be talking about next year's budget, and so this is the current budget that we're in, making amendments that we need to make to make sure that we end our year-end correctly. You've got some bullet points there that address it, and if you've got any questions, we're happy to, but, you know, an example would be the restroom at Howard Field went a little bit over to make sure it was ADA compliant, those numbers are in there to make sure that happened, it still stays very close to budget, but anytime we're going to do anything beyond what we originally anticipated with what you all voted on, we're going to come to you and tell you that the numbers changed, and we want you to take a look at them. Am I listening to this? Of course, the gas, before the order, it had gone over budget. The only way to direct those things is with a budget amendment. So this is the third and last. The first reading, there'll be a second reading in June.
I met with Loretta on this today, and there's going to be some small changes, probably, to this at the second reading. One of them we found was in the sanitation fund number, it was going to be buried just a little bit. The one big swing you see in here is Section 7, and that's where the payment's going to be made, from the silver fund, and...
Yeah, we wanted, we wanted to include that, because everybody keeps saying there's no reason to put that off, and we want to make sure that the commission votes on spending that settlement money and paying off towards the state revolving loan fund.
So with that, I'll make a motion that we accept.
Second.
Okay, the motion's been made, duly seconded. We have just passed the ordinance 2018-1020, any further discussion? All in favor, six and five, a saying aye. If those like to sign, that one's a pass. Number eight, excuse me, B, ordinance 2018-1020 on my first reading, ordinance of the city of Mount Pleasant adopting the annual budget and tax rate for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2018, and ending June 30, 2019.
So mayor and commissioners, this is the ordinance that will set our budget for the next fiscal year, will set our tax fiscal year. We've had a special study session that we discussed this over a week ago, and then we had the study session last week. But we have put in front of you a budget that keeps our tax rate where it is right now, at $1.62, and to do that, we will have to advertise in the paper of our intent to exceed the certified tax rate, that's the process to do that, and happy to address any questions. Cory, anything, I'm not saying there. We are hearing from Bobby Daniels' office that we will have the certified rate, for sure, certified, right now it's preliminary, by the 20th. Our next meeting in June is the 19th, so we are suggesting we hold open the 21st of June as a special call meeting day if needed. I honestly don't think it's going to be needed, but no one, no one knows if it's going to be certified prior to that, but we're just going to keep that out there. It's easier to cancel a meeting than it is to set a meeting, so we'll probably keep that 21st date open, but that's what you have in front of you with the budget. Happy to answer any questions.
You will need to put notice in the paper for a public hearing based on this new budget, and also a public hearing for, to exceed the certified tax rate, if that's what y'all decide to do. So you need to know today for that. And also talk with the state Board of Equalization about the process, to make sure that we're doing it right, and to have the public meeting about the tax rate, you have to have that official certified number, and they can get it turned around immediately, as soon as they get it from Bobby Daniels, but they're not going to be willing to guarantee it any time before the June 20th, or they're hoping for earlier, but that's...
And we have very specific rules about how early the notice needs to be in the paper before it's voted on final, and so we're going to follow all of that.
So that, that here, public hearing, would be, it would be additional meeting if we had a special call?
All depends on timing. If they get it in within 10 days, we can do the 19th, and it's not going to be...
Okay, so you just let us know, we're just sort of going to hold, stand by for that.
Yeah.
Kate, and $1.62, according to the new...
No, that is our current rate, and because the reappraisal went up and went higher, the certified rate, it's going to be in the area of $1.44, and we're, we're saying that we presented you the budget based on that $1.62, because that would be a huge deficit if we adopted the $1.44. And it was very deceiving in the paper, if you read the article about the state of Columbia lowering the tax rate. They are not lowering the tax rate, at all. I, I don't know that people will figure that out at all, but they're not. They are accepting the certified tax rate. It should be a status quo, not an increase, not a decrease, but we'll see.
But the whole thing, but it's not exceeding the rate.
So it's the county, it's the county, yeah. Definitely it's the county.
You have to have that meeting on the 21st, I would request we have it sometime this morning, I've got to be on the road that afternoon.
And I'm fine with that.
I'm fine.
So, is it 9:00 or 10:00, or what do you prefer?
Whatever.
Okay, just, just morning, okay.
I'll, I'll say this, I want to thank Loretta, and Kate, and Cory, and everybody, because I can tell you, this budget, mayor, I'm with you, I wish there was some way we could trim some places. But I've gone through this thing with a fine tooth comb, I even got down to where it was going to be $1,000 or $2,000 buried from the previous year, I couldn't find enough to...
We've got to be thankful, too, that we have O.C. Lewis, Texas, that helps...
That's exactly right.
That was a lot, but my gosh, I think I signed off on $25,000 worth of power bills for last month, this is crazy.
But thank you also for taking the time to, in the, your department manager's book, the meeting, I know I was there, but the information you got, and the time to the, and explaining to, it makes it a whole lot easier when we're clear on it, to be able to explain it to somebody who comes and acts up, because otherwise, you're going to tie, you're not real sure.
And anything else that you knew...
But as the mayor said, that paper article is very deceiving, very deceiving.
And, you know, I talked with Bobby yesterday as well, you know, I realize it'd be wonderful to say the $1.44, but it didn't, it didn't create a balanced budget for us, you know, one number two... I've got to be on the road that afternoon.
And I'm fine with that.
I'm fine.
So is, is nine or ten, or what do you prefer?
Whatever.
Okay, just, just morning, okay.
I, I'll say this, I wanna thank Loretta and Kate and Cory and everybody, 'cause I can tell you, this budget, Mayor, I'm with you, I wish there was some way we could trim some places. But I've gone through this thing with a fine tooth comb. I even got down to where it was gonna be a thousand or two thousand dollars buried from the previous year. I couldn't find enough to...
Well, we gotta be thankful too, that we have those in Lewis, Texas.
That's exactly right.
That was a lot, but my gosh, I think I signed off on twenty-five thousand dollars worth of power bills for last month. This is crazy.
Well, but thank you also for taking the time to, in the, your department manager's book, the meeting. I know I was there, but the information you got and the time to do it and explaining it to her. It makes it a whole lot easier when we're clear on it to be able to explain it to somebody who comes and acts up, 'cause otherwise you're going, I'm not real sure.
And anything else that you knew...
That paper article is very deceiving.
Yeah.
Very deceiving.
And, you know, I, I talked with Bobby yesterday as well. You know, I, I realize it'd be wonderful to say the dollar forty-four, but it didn't, it didn't create a balanced budget for us. There's one number two. I think you're gonna see other communities locally that they're gonna, we're gonna hear about this, gonna be... I mean, Spring Hill's talking up to forty percent, forty cent influence.
Yeah.
Of course, they got a lot that's going on over there that they gotta get fixed. But you know what, at the end of the day, we got a lot going on that we need to try to get fixed too. So I know that some of these are probably gonna be contested. You know, and the ones that get contested, that cost us the most are the larger facilities where they manufacture this and that stuff. So let's just somewhat knock on wood and hope that there will be some that will be contested. We know that, I mean, that's part of what happens. But if you knock a million dollars off these properties, it's a whole lot more knocking ten thousand dollars off them. And that's where you can keep it.
Yeah. And find out until the light rises.
It's too late.
Right, it's too late, yeah.
So I don't think we really have any choice but to go with a dollar sixty-two.
So if it's only here, all we're done, the way I do is like, I get through, but your answer is right as well, it's like, yeah.
So I just, you know, I just think there's been a lot of really hard work, a lot of really good work that's gone on.
Chair will entertain a motion, please.
Motion to approve, there's no new budget proposed for review?
Motion to, I made to accept this budget, I'll second it. Judy Seconded, any further discussion? All in favor, signify the same eye. Aye. All like sign. The motion passed, you announce it. Item C, ordinance two zero one eight dash one zero two two, on first reading. An ordinance establishing the City of Mount Pleasant historical zoning.
Mayor and Commissioners, this is the very first step of a long process to recognize our downtown commercial district as historic and protect what we want as far as future building and the facade of these businesses. The only thing that this ordinance is doing is allowing you as a commission to create the board. And then once the board is created, we'll be coming to you with suggestions of names. I'm sure you all have ideas of maybe who would be good to be on this board. We're proposing a five-member board. And then after that, that board will come to you, well, they'll come to the planning commission, and if it's approved, it would come to you as a city commission to recommend bylaws, recommend design guidelines, all of that. So right now, we're just creating the body of people of the commission to do that. Did I say that correctly, Cory?
Yeah, you're, you're setting up the historic zoning commission, and the mayor will appoint the members, and that'll be red by. And the commission will kinda do the work from there, with the oversight of the planning commission and the commission.
So there is no time limit on this ordinance, if it's getting its name replaced?
I don't, is there?
Uh, no.
I didn't hear the presentation that day, but sometimes it's very hard to...
No, I mean, if you have an ordinance on the boat that says you're gonna set up a historic commission, you would need to be planning to do that and making efforts to do that. But I don't think there is a timeframe that has to be done.
Is there a procedure for this op...
I didn't hear your question.
Is there a procedure for this op, the board should approve, I mean, to defeat this ordinance? Is it just like we do any other ones, breaking up the bond file, it's not a special, it's a special...
You're just creating a commission, so this is, this ordinance that you have tracks the state law pretty much word for word. So we would have to go through the procedure that's in the state law to reverse it.
Or not like a local law, that's why everybody's asking for, we got enough of the power of the state.
Yes. The city has the option to create a historic zoning commission, so you're executing that option to do that.
But then let's say it doesn't work, we have the option to resolve.
Yeah, I would, I haven't looked at that, but I think it's probably the same process that we did with...
Just like any other ordinance, yeah.
Yeah.
Everybody in here's home folks, so, you know, there is gonna be opposition, there's no question about it. I favor it to, for our local business districts to protect the integrity of our maintenance. I'm not much a favorite going whole up for it.
Right, and, and I keep saying to, to you and to others in meetings, is we're not looking for control, we're looking for protection of the assets that we have in our, our downtown district. And that's, that's our priority right now, is that nothing, they can't create a, a district, they can't create guidelines without all kinds of further approval. All you're doing is saying, "We're creating this board, and we're gonna put people on it." That's all we're doing right now.
More discussion? Chair will entertain any motions, I won't give.
Motion to accept, just presented.
Motion has been made that we accept this ordinance written, I'll second that motion. If it's seconded, is any further discussion? All in favor, signify the same eye. Aye. All like sign. The motion has been passed, you announce it. I'll probably pass it, Judy don't know what the right's there for.
That's why you wanted to know the timeline. He thought he was being flickered around.
I knew that probably, he gave me a heads up on that at the meeting. And I said, "Look, big boy, I can name you."
Item D, Resolution two zero one eight dash thirteen. A resolution by the City of Mount Pleasant, Tennessee, declaring certain Mount Pleasant Police Department inventory as surplus property and authorizing the sale of this surplus property.
Mayor and Commissioners, we do this quite often. Once things have gotten to the point where they are surplus, these are military surplus items that we have to keep on our books for a year before we can surplus them, and they'll go on govdeals.com. There's ten items that are specifically outlined in the resolution. If you have any question on any of them, we're ready to surplus these items. And a lot of the money that is coming from the sale of this through GovDeals is paying for the software program that you all approved a, a little bit ago, Tyler, for the police department, and they are extremely pleased with it so far. It's working very well. They've had staff, Ron Tyler here, spending time with Martha and others, and so far, that software's working very well. Can you give anything you wanna add to that?
I'll ask you. When, if this is going to be approved tonight, when will they actually go on GovDeals?
We can actually put them on tomorrow, but we filed for the title to the freightliner yesterday. So it's gonna be about a week before we get that, so...
Do you receive notice when it goes around there?
I do, yes, I put it on myself.
And when it sells, when, you know.
Yeah, we're, we're in the process.
Let me know when the other guy explains it, I'd like to know when it goes on there.
Okay.
You looking for that field kitchen?
I just wanna know where the field kitchen goes. I wanna see what it goes for.
You have to, you have to have a Hummer to pull it, it's really hard.
I know, well, I can't mind, I just wanna see what it sells for.
Who, who's able, who is not eligible to...
Anyone, it's a public, third-party auction, anybody can, anybody.
Any employees can...
Yeah.
If I put a title for the truck, 'cause it's been saying that if we have an actual title for it, we can get those about $10,000.
I'll bet you will.
No, anyone can, it's a public auction, we have no control over it.
These people cannot.
They can.
Well, they can.
Yeah, they can. Well, I mean, you can determine that personally. I'm just saying it's a third party that's holding the auction, we wouldn't know who is bidding on it.
When it lands up in your yard.
That is a person...
You know what, if you land this majority deal on the front page of the Herald...
You bought it, purchasing it with everybody in the world having the same access that you did.
I understand that, but I thought we passed, when we decided to start doing some of this, we had either a resolution or an...
We, it was discussed, but it wasn't...
There is a restriction in the ordinance, I can't remember who it restricts.
We can't, I think the ordinance said that we cannot go on.
Those that are approving it, yes.
The two thousand thirteen ordinance does have a restriction in it, I'll give that a...
I thought it was...
Is it just the commission?
I can't prove...
I remember there was a discussion about employees and the commission and...
Hey, this thing right here, this is fantastic too, I mean, we got a lot of good news. This, I mean, this sale right here, the freightliner brings another few dollars more than you think. It's forty-one thousand dollars already.
We're, we're, we're probably hoping to have probably close to fifty.
I mean, that's fantastic.
We will follow up with you on the language on that, uh, it was all the way back to two thousand thirteen? Yeah, I thought we...
We did something within the last year.
We've done something recently.
But I just...
Because we updated our...
I don't remember.
We updated our purchasing policy.
Yeah, but I don't remember what we did.
Okay, well, we'll, we'll follow up and let you know that.
But we see what this comes from anyway. I'll drink some dinner from jail. You want, I, I'll make a motion to...
Okay, motion has been made that we accept the Resolution two zero one eight dash thirteen, itself surplus property.
I'll second that.
Judy Seconded, further discussion? All in favor, signify the same eye. Aye. All like sign, that resolution is passed, you announce it. I impede Resolution to City of Mount Pleasant, two zero one eight dash one four, adopting the procedure for enforcing property maintenance regulations and recovering costs associated with the city's remedy or abatement of code violations and designated building plan director and special police officer.
Mayor and Commissioners, we talked about this at the study session some. This initially started as just a way to make sure we could put liens on property while we spend money to clean the properties up. And Cory's done a great job, and I'll also chime in on cleaning it up, 'cause there's several areas of, if you're just dealing with somebody that is an owner-occupied building, that they've got illegal storage or high grass. If it's a vacant building that needs attention, or if it's a dilapidated structure that we need to take down, we wanna make sure we have an ordinance, or we have language in this resolution that gives us the teeth to put a lien on that property so we can recoup it hopefully in the future. I know Cory addressed a lot of the issues at the study session on Thursday. I don't know if there's any other questions for anybody on that. But she felt strongly, and I agree, that giving Robert that authority to do that is an important part of the court process and the lien process for us to be able to collect on that. Happy to take any questions.
Do we, do we have the Bible Robert uniforms, he gonna use those constantly?
He's gonna get a big old...
And deputies, and deputies, dollars.
Sure, I saw your uniform, too.
This was not, this doesn't change any of the ordinances. All the ordinances were encouraged this way, and I think the city of Mount Pleasant has actually had the code department be special police officers before, but just, it changes in people, and it just hasn't happened. So this, this really just outlines the procedure that's already there, so that everybody knows what to do and what their, what their department's supposed to follow up with.
In reading this, I just wanna make sure I understand this, and I think I do, is that, alright, if there is an arrest made, there is gonna be an officer come, okay?
Oh, yeah. With first, Robert.
Only question I have, I guess, I, I don't know if it makes you get it or not. But on our packet, you know, it has Resolution twenty eighteen fourteen, but on my computer, it has twenty eighteen twelve.
Yeah, we, we did have some confusion with the resolution numbers, and I believe that the final documents that you're gonna sign, we've corrected that. We removed a resolutions from the agenda, and that messed our numbers up. Mr. White pointed that out earlier today, I think we had it corrected, I don't think what was sent to you was correct. But thanks, I appreciate you pointing that out.
So this one is fourteen?
Yes. I'm gonna review that again with Teresa tomorrow, but that's...
Further discussion? Chair will entertain a motion. So move. So move for adoption, second. Judy Seconded, further discussion? All in favor, signify the same eye. Aye. All like sign, the resolution passed. Resolution two zero one eight dash fifteen. A resolution establishing a new bank account and declaring representatives of the City of Mount Pleasant, Tennessee, to have the authority to sign it to this account.
Mayor and Commissioners, I know that Loretta talked about this at the study session. Very difficult right now, the way it's set up, and Vice Mayor White was a big help on this, to determine where deposits need to go, when a one check goes to water, gas, sewer, and sanitation. And by setting up this clearinghouse account, that's gonna make the lives of a lot of people a lot easier. I don't know, if you have any questions of Mr. White or Loretta, that that's something we've been working on for the last month or so.
Further discussion? Chair will entertain a motion, please.
Motion to accept.
Motion to accept, second. Judy Seconded, further discussion?
Just so you know, the signatures are Loretta, myself, Mayor, Vice Mayor.
Should I say? All in favor, signify the same eye. All like sign. Motion passed, you announce it. I meant to tell Redlett, gonna talk to you a little night, the work we did on that, and you did on this last night, with Robert Parker there, did a great job with that, and we needed him. At Mount Pleasant Rose, and we had to pay, take care of everything, we just need that thing to do, so, I guess it's a good time.
And we haven't been collecting on, on money that we're spending, it's crazy.
Well, it's, it's hard to collect that money, I'll tell you, it's like pulling your teeth to try to get it. You'll never get a hundred percent. You file all the liens you want to.
You figure, the people are breaking the law anyway.
We end up with a property in the long run sometimes, for sure.
You just have to get their attention.
Yeah.
The hitter's taking minutes up, and I should probably stay.
On that last vote, just...
Oh. Okay, but you're a signature on there, aren't you?
Then I probably can. The only thing is, I mean, there's no danger gained to me from it.
I think as long as you disclose, as long as you disclose that.
Okay, then I vote yes, but everybody needs to know I work at that place.
Yeah, you're disclosing that.
Another question, another, another, sorry, enter the minutes, please.
Okay.
Vice Mayor White made those comments, and the board had no objection to him doing that. Put that in there, just my action's for the man.
Just above-boward votes.
Yeah.
Don't worry about it that way. I'm gonna be there with you, 'cause I'm not kidding.
Item G, Resolution two zero one eight dash one six. A resolution authorizing Mount Pleasant Parks and Recreation Department to stop volleyball pits and volleyball courts in both as well.
Mayor and Commissioners, we had a very fun conversation about this on Thursday night, study session. And our, our take after that was that we are definitely going to go ahead and put the ball pits into Veterans Park and Gardenia Park and volleyball courts in both as well. I'd just like to clarify somewhat for the minutes that there's a record of those that committed to purchasing. I think Vice Mayor, you talked about the Gaga pit and...
I think it was that the mayor and I agreed to pay for the Gaga pit in Gardenia Park.
And the volleyball?
How much is the volley, you said like three hundred fifty dollars, like goo goo Gaga.
Gaga.
Goo goo Gaga.
Gaga volleyball.
It's just material.
Goo goo Gaga.
Last time I priced it, which was like, two months ago, it was like three fifty.
That's just materials, we'll do the labor.
Okay, but what about the volleyball, shouldn't be much at all?
Volleyball is just to, to...
You know, make those up, it's tough.
One night concrete and then...
That was the volleyball.
The net. Volleyball net.
Yeah.
And then net.
And that's not what, less than a hundred dollars, they were, yeah.
So you're talking about somewhere around five hundred dollars total?
It would never be that high, I don't think, but, yeah.
About the fault, you can have it. Get drunk.
He's giving you another responsibility on hand.
Okay, just wanted that in the record, thank you.
That's, that's good clarification, then. Is there any further discussion on this? Chair will entertain a motion, please. So move. Someone will pass that resolution, is it second?
Second.
Judy Seconded, further discussion? All in favor, signify the same eye.
Aye.
All like sign. Everybody vote.
Yeah.
You did vote. You have to vote.
We called for section five, I mean, we called for section five, yeah.
What's, what's, what's section five got to do with it? I just immigrate right quick.
That the Mount Pleasant maintains all ownership and control of Veterans Park and Gardenia Park Community Park? Is that what you're talking about?
What, what is your problem there?
Because when Gardenia Park was established, and I know what your deed says, that it came through the Gardenia Garden Club, and have a list of the people that own the Gardenia Garden Club. Your seed was paid a hundred dollars for one hundred years. This park will belong up there, and it's all a year, because I told you to acquire, and I have it all up here. So I voted yesterday, except for that, in that part right there.
We did do a title search. We did do a title search. And the deed...
If you have a deed that says differently, I'd... If, if you have a deed that says differently, I'd love to see it.
I have a deed that says differently.
Well, the deed, I did a title search on Gardenia Park back when we were considering the last resolution. And it was transferred, I think, from the county to...
Cisco family, yeah.
The Cisco family, recently.
We went all the way back to, I think, the fifties, and it was originally owned by a corporation that had the Cisco family was the owners of that corporation. And then that was conveyed to the city, and then to the county, and then back to the city. There is a restriction in there about, that this property has to be used for recreational purposes. But that's, that's the only restriction in the deed.
Let me tell you why I don't think you should do that. You have to incorporate it as a nonprofit, it's what you're reporting, trying to say it. That's why, hey, it's added management, have annual aid and so forth. So the only way that the city can give you any money, and if you were nonprofit, couldn't do it that way. That's not being, as a non-lawyer.
Yeah, what you need, like legal, somebody would be legally filing the annual report every year.
Absolutely.
Now, that, that, when you start funding things, you have to, you can fund nonprofits.
Similar to all of the, well, just a few of the requests that we have in our budget, that we will not give them the money they've asked for, they cannot show that they're officially designated by the state, that they have an audit that we can look at, and we know their financial records, so we can't do it.
I have a further question, and though, if it's not going to be a city park, then forget what we've, we've done.
Didn't say it wasn't a city park, that's what it's saying, like, you didn't listen to me, once again, it's like, it's just, this was issued to the club by the city officials for the land as a city park with playground equipment and shelters provided.
It maintains all ownership and control of Beckins Park and Gardenia Clark Community Park. If we don't maintain ownership of it, then we have no insurance on it, Jackie.
Well, that's right back to the court, when you were also talking about putting, making it a child park for kids under the age of ten, your insurance is on skyrocket, already checked it for you.
And we, we called, we called team, we've got an answer from team.
And we have, and we have planned it, and with that, because of the question...
Is it something that, I don't know what you're looking at, where you're reading that, there's a lease?
No, it's, it's, uh, it's a resolution.
Oh, okay.
Is it a, do you have an actual?
It's signed from the, uh, Gardenia Garden Club that was originally...
But we don't have a deed that has that information in there.
But is it an actual, is it a lease that's signed by someone from?
Not that I know of, I'm still investigating that part.
Okay, if you find a lease or something that's signed by someone from the city, I'd love to see it, yeah.
Who shares the right to vote, no, I mean, it's fine.
Well, and it could be out there, we're not aware of it.
Yeah, but if, there was nothing in the actual chain of title, like with the registrar's office, and usually those things are recorded, if it's a long-term lease like that, then those are recorded with the registrar's deed.
Yeah.
And I didn't find one, but also, the latest deed we had was, I think, like nineteen seventy-nine, so...
This is actually in, um, and if you check insurance, if you're going to... If you check the insurance in that, if you're going to have a park, which you mentioned, a playground, a kid's park every summer, at that, you need to check into your insurance with getting approved by the city, because the city is liable, if you're in a plan, a camp, summer camp out there in the summer.
We never filed an application with the city to do that, just like we do everything else, that we do up on this park.
Is, that's what I'm saying, that it's a city...
We do do that.
Okay, that's what I'm saying, because we've inherited...
We never had anything up there without filling out an application. And when I made that remark, I said we in the process of putting together to present it to the city and the commission board.
Excuse me. Mount Pleasant was four four one, yes?
Four one.
Motion does pass, four one. Item H, resolution two zero one eight dash one seven, a resolution authorized Mount Pleasant Parks and Recreation Department to apply for a grant to the Dog Park in Howard Field, and authorize additional construction of Dog Park in Howard Field.
So Mayor and Commissioners, this is giving the city the opportunity for this grant, it's through the Boyd Foundation, and it's due June twentieth, so we'll be working on that if it's approved. And you have the map of that corner of the outline, it's not part of the ball field for that dog park. And I know this question came up about insurance, and apparently that question was asked years ago, but we re-asked it last week, and the response was, it'll be treated as any other park, there's no increase to insurance. I mean, obviously, if claims, you always are going to have issues with an increase, but it, there's no increase for putting the dog park in there.
How much does that grant go to?
Twenty-five thousand, it goes a hundred, we're requesting, we're, we're planning, aren't we planning on requesting twenty-five thousand?
We're requesting for the twenty-five thousand dollars.
No match.
It's considered like a, a great Tennessee dog park or something, they can vote us in for the hundred thousand dollars or something.
We're requesting twenty-five.
Talk about this system, if we make a mark on this resolution, this res, if we do not get this grant, then we need this, we need to, we need to...
Correct.
...upon the saving of the grant.
Yeah.
Put that in, here I say, the condition, but if the grant's not received, we're not going to go to park.
We don't have any revenue in the budget, maybe for the dog park.
It's actually on our strategic plan for down the road, but when this came out...
You don't have the money fund to get it.
Well, no, not right, we don't, so, I mean, that's...
Cory ahead of us, or...
Yeah, I think it's, it's, um, it's a conditional approval, so you're getting approval right now to apply for the grant. And if they get the grant, then you're approving the condition of the dog park.
Well, the reason I say they have to, and I would like to see that in there, is because there'll be a lot of new members on this board, and no member, and they won't know what has happened, they're not going to have this lingo. And probably two or different versions of what was said, and what was intended, he said. So I, I think it's a good idea to put that in there, but that's...
You're right, the intent is to just, the intent is to have the resolution adjusted to do apply for the grant, there's no, any funding there, and no plans to do it to the park without funding there.
If everyone understands that, and thinking the future, we have to establish that, if you put that...
Surely, we'll also be in the minute.
Did we, did we, you find out, you got a clear date on your thing?
Oh, we're in the process of looking at that, appears so, but we want to make sure. We won't be able to get the grant if we don't have the clear title, yeah.
I did a preliminary title search on that, and it's, um, it's city-owned, it's all...
Okay, so I know the restriction of whether we use, or whether we can clear it for...
That area, that specific area, yeah, correct. So, so far, it looks like it's, let's prove that to get the grant, okay, yeah.
There's history up there for the ballpark, but it used to be a college.
Yeah.
Yeah, what?
They called it Howard College, I, I never have been ever, but it wasn't it.
It was a college, it was...
All right, general comments from yourselves on chair? Sure, did anybody else?
Do we need to, do we have any...
Oh, we did, excuse me. All right, Chair will entertain a motion.
So we made a motion to approve, as presented.
Is it second? entertain a motion?
Second.
Second, further discussion? All in favor, signify the thing, aye. Oath, like sign, the resolution is passed. Nobody signed up?
No, sir. No signature.
How many want to say something, you want to say?
No. Just really happy to see what's going on. You're going to drop your dog off in the morning, she peeks up in the afternoon, pick him up in the afternoon.
Thomas will walk him for you.
Okay, we're not talking about that.
So that's your bad dog. That's excellent, okay, all right. How many, any Commissioners?
I just wanted to, I do know that, I am really not the villain when it comes to Gardenia Park, but it's just like, last month, when we had the last meeting, very, last young lady, she does have a business temporary in Mount Pleasant, they got up and spoke, and said it's free. I've got my longtime girlfriend, like, looking, it's free. And she's the very one that had all our playgrounds, just putting it removal up there. And she's been here living in Mount Pleasant. Her brother-in-law is the one that's been having all these events up there with me to help raise money for Gardenia Park, and she has not attended one meeting. I'm on this commission to cover Gardenia Park. I have to be on Parks and Recreation for five years, and I would never put on there. So I just decided I'll run as city comm, city commissioner, that is my pet peeve, to see a park with built facilities up there. And if I come up wrong to y'all, I'm sorry, but I'm about what's fair on both sides of the track.
Well, we've got to quit doing this, recognizing there's a track.
There's a track.
Treat everybody...
Thanks.
We, we...
I just want to thank, uh, Mayor, uh, Baby and Vice Mayor, for their donations, for the, uh, whatever it is we're giving up there. I appreciate that.
And it was a, it was a unanimous vote.
They go by goo goo Gaga.
No, we're not going to say it, it may be the Bailey goo goo Gaga.
Why don't you play the first game, and if, if we have an initiation game, then you ought to do that.
You count me out.
No, no, your dad already said he'd make sure you got there.
I won't be there.
But the major turn, turn.